I'm live before I wrap this guy, I'll ask everyone if you will please silence your cell phones. Appreciate that. I would like to call this Dorchester, this wow, today is the 17th of November. This year has flown past. Let me call this November 17th Dorchester County County Council meeting to order. I will ask everyone if you will please rise for an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilman Byers is going to lead us in an invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, just thank God for the opportunity to come together as a community just to be able to work to make lives better for our citizens. God asks that you give us wisdom and discernment to be able to make the best decisions based on the information we've got. Lord, just ask that you go with us this week. Lord, as we just come up on Christmas season and Thanksgiving and holidays, just ask for safe travels and God, just an opportunity to be able to spend time together with family and just to be worshiping you. Ask that all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is adoption of minutes from the November 3rd, 2025 county council meeting.
So move.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? We are six in favor and one absent. Next item on the agenda is adoption of proclamation number 25-16 proclaiming November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month in Dorchester County. And I am seeking a motion to adopt that proclamation after which we are going to ask, I hope they're prepared. We're going to ask Chief Lisa Collins and Councilwoman Janie Leach if they'll come up and tell us a little bit about what that means. So is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
There is a couple of motions and a second. All in favor? We are six in favor and one absent and I don't know if, are you both coming? Come on up. Want to welcome Chief Collins and Councilwoman Leach to the podium.
Thank you, sir. November's National Native American Heritage Month and in our community, we're the Wasamassaw Tribe of Varnertown Indians. We're state recognized since 2005. We have a community that's expands into Dorchester and Berkeley County and Charleston County. And we're very proud of our culture, our historical presence, our contemporary presence and the things we're working on in our community. So we take this month to celebrate our people and we have all kinds of things across the month of November that we do. We do movies that represent our culture. We have one tomorrow that's going to be at the College of Charleston. It's called Inhabitants. Everyone is welcome. And we also do speeches, cultural classes and things of that sort. Do you want to share?
No, just we're thankful that, you know, again, for just the acknowledgement, it means a lot to our community. As Lisa said, it is where, you know, it would not just a historical presence, we are a contemporary presence here. So trying to make sure that people know that we are still here.
That's right.
We're going to get you to stand right there. I'm going to get everybody to come down and we're going to present you this. For folks that are here that aren't, because we do have more than one person around here that aren't from the Low Country that may not know Wasamassaw from that standpoint, but and it's in the resolution here, but folks around here, when you see the names and in this resolution, it talks about the Edisto, the Edoan, the Catawba and the Cherokee. Everybody's heard of Cherokee and everybody knows where the Edisto River is, but they don't always know exactly what that, where those names came from. And the Kiwan, I can keep on, not necessarily part of this one, but ultimately those local names are critical to the state of South Carolina.
Right, and the history of South Carolina.
Correct. So if you will get council to meet down there, we're going to present this. Next item on the agenda is request to address council. We had none today, so the next item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Council, I'm excited to say that this year Dorchester County is participating in the Day of Caring on Thursday, November 20th, 2025. We have over, at this point, 79 volunteers. Day of Caring is a community-wide volunteer event where individuals, families, corporate teams, et cetera, help local nonprofit agencies, schools and community organizations. This year, we will be engaged in projects at Somerville High School, the YMCA at the ponds, the St. Paul Community Park, Shady Grove Community Park and neighborhoods in North Charleston and St. George. Our projects will include landscaping, tree planting, grounds, maintenance, litter removal and stormwater maintenance. And we're excited to do more service to our community.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, and I were all excited, I've got the guests and I'm going to ask Mr. Adam Davis if he will come up with the Capitol Projects update, followed by Ms. Sunshine Trakis, Director of Public Works and do we have somebody to do that? Okay. And Mr. Ward is actually going to do the Water and Sewer Force. Mr. Davis, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Chairman Chenus, Members of Council, Mr. Ward. For Capitol Projects Updates, the first update I have for you tonight is mixed-use development at 500 North Ane Street. As you're aware, Furman continues to go through the approval process with the Design Review Board and will be doing so through the month of December with those work sessions. We'll look to have Boudreaux and Furman some conceptual designs for you all to review at your next county council meeting. Moving on to the Coroner's Office, our three-week look ahead consists of waterproofing the building and mechanical, electrical, plumbing, rough ends. Oakbrook Sports Complex, we held a pre-construction kickoff on October 23rd. The month of November scope of work includes surveying and the layout of land disturbance. If you go to that site right now, you're currently, will see the silt fencing installation. And moving forward on the next couple of weeks, the first order of business would be the parking lot demo where the daycare it currently is. Getting that to where it needs to be, working the underground conduit for utilities and site lighting will be our first order of business there. St. George Healthcare Facility with MUSC, our flooring, drop ceilings and casework are now installed. Next 30 days, doors and hardware will be completed and final MEP connections will be also completed. Then we'll look to furnish and fixtures moving forward. Substantial completion is still set for the end of December, so we're looking forward to that. Fire Station 8 in Ridgville, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, rough ends have started roofing panel, paneling replacement is complete. Future site for the Somerville Library on Gum Street, the county executed the voluntary cleanup contract with the Department of Environmental Services. Next steps for assessment and remediation services will follow pending correspondence from Terracan and DES. Summers Corner Fire EMS, site work is continuing, underslab utilities have been completed. Today, building materials arrived and were unloaded this afternoon. And if you're in the area tomorrow morning at about 4 o'clock, we'll do some concrete pours. So come on out with your cup of joe if you want to see that going on. And then the Veterans Facility, the final construction documents have been submitted for review and permitting and Missy is aware, so we'll look to move that along. Any questions, comments?
Questions? On, I just have a real brief one. The MUSC, the St. George Facility, do they have a goal? Obviously, we have to get it all set up for them. Do they have an expectation?
Yeah, so looking at when they can actually furnish and get all their things in, we'll look probably the first, the first or second of January. We're kind of coordinating what the ribbon cutting, well, all those dates would line up with you guys as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Ward, Mr. Chairman, Members of Council and Madam Clerk of Court. Before I do my updates, I do quickly want to just introduce, do a quick introduction of our new transportation development manager. I am very excited to announce we have Mackenzie Kelly who's joining us today. And she brings with her a wealth of experience in managing programs, transportation projects and pavement management, so a lot of great things to come.
Thank you. Welcome.
So for First Bend Road and Rice Mill Drainage, this project is currently advertised for construction and the bid opening is next week on November 25th. For the design build, bridge replacements, construction of the Deer Run Road Bridge Replacement continues and the road is expected to reopen in mid-December. The contractor is expected to move to Pointer Drive Bridge next with lane closures initially. And then we'll close the road for a detour once the clearing and grubbing activities are completed. I'll be sure to coordinate ahead of time on any lane closures and the reopening of the Deer Run Bridge with the PIO, School District and Emergency Services. For the Ashley River Park Connector, CWS was good with our proposal for soil nail walls, so we are moving forward with 90% design plans permitting and right-of-way acquisition. For Ladsen Road Streetscaping, this project is currently under construction. The contractor mobilized on November 3rd and is working in the first of five sections from Travelers Boulevard to Benton's Lodge Road. They'll be pouring concrete for the medians and curbing this week and they received DOT permission to work from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. with lane closures this week, so we're going to see how that goes. Oakbrook Wayfinding signage, the work orders for the county and the town's wayfinding projects have been issued to the contractor and the CEI consultant. So we're working to schedule the pre-construction meeting, hopefully in the first week of December. For spring road improvements, this project is substantially complete and we held the final inspection on November 10th. The contractors currently addressing those punch list items that we address, that we identified at that meeting. For the Maple Street Widening Project, the contractor has completed the drainage installations in Highway 78 and is working to complete the final drainage installations from the railroad tracks to Highway 78 this month. The asphalt surface paving in Highway 78 has started. If you've driven by there lately, you can see that going on and it's expected to be completed this December. Sawmill Branch Trail Extension, our online public information meeting and comment period ended on September 25th and we received 90 total comments. The design team has prepared a public meeting summary, which is currently under review and then we'll be sharing that with the public. For SC 27 Widening, Banks Construction is the apparent low bidder, so we'll be working with purchasing and the COG to get EDA's checklist submitted and the contract executed. For US 78 Phase 3A, right-of-way acquisition continues and we're coordinating with Norfolk Southern to obtain their latest review comments. The engineering consultant is also continuing to incorporate those value engineering comments that we identified. For US 78 Phase 3B, the right-of-way agent continues to meet with property owners in the field and getting appraisals ordered. We have identified a few right-of-way and plat discrepancy issues, so we're working to resolve those before we reach out to any additional property owners. For Central Avenue and Parsons Road Improvements, we completed our summary documentation of the public meeting that was held on June 10 and was posted to the project website on October 31st. We sent an email out through our transportation email distribution list just to notify any interested citizens that that inspiration is now posted. For Dorchester Road Improvements, we received 436 total comments during our 30-day public comment period that ended on August 15th. The consultant is now compiling and summarizing all the public comments we received and we're working to draft the C Mar bid documents to go ahead and get a contractor onboard for that project. For Delamar Highway Improvements, we've laid out the road alignment and the engineer has started to draft the preliminary plans and we're looking to potentially have that public information meeting this February. For Linger Longer Drive Extension, the engineering consultant has started right-of-way acquisition and final plan development. For Main Street Improvements, we held a coordination meeting with the Town of Somerville on September 19th to review concept alternatives. We plan to hold a joint public information meeting with the town's project and that is scheduled tentatively to be January 13th of confirmation of the meeting location. Miles Jameson Road Improvements, we held the public information meeting on November 6th at Dr. Eugene Sires Elementary School and we had 213 in attendance and received 83 written comments from the meeting alone. So all the meeting materials are available online and we'll continue to accept public comments for 30 days until December 6th. For Orangeburg Loop, we'll be holding two public information meetings on December 9th and 11th, one at each end of the project. One meeting will be held on December 9th at Greg Middle School and the second meeting will be held on December 11th at First Baptist Church of Jedberg. So road signs to advertise the meeting are being put up this week and postcards are being mailed out to residents in the area. For Orangeburg Road and Mallard Road Intersection, we have completed the right-of-way acquisition and SC DOT will be issuing the right-of-way certification. So we are also moving forward with preparing the bid package. Stalsville Loop, the public comment period ended on October 30th and we received 17 comments. The consultant is in the process of reviewing all the comments and preparing the public meeting summary. For US 17A Widening, field surveys and environmental field work for the extension of the project to Luden Drive are underway and will be completed in the next month. We also met with DOT on November 10th to discuss the hydraulic requirements of the Ashley River Bridge Replacement. For West Scott Boulevard, the public information meeting took place on October 9th at Fort Dorchester Elementary School and there were over 70 in attendance. We accepted public comments until November 9th and we received 31 total comments. For Patriot Boulevard, and this is from West Scott Boulevard to Weber Boulevard, the city of North Charleston has executed their contract with the design engineer and they'll be conducting verification surveys in the field to verify the field work for their final design and permitting. And this project is expected to go to construction late next year. And then lastly, I've got Fairfield Road Paving. Construction Notice to Proceed was issued for that project on July 1st. The contractors completed clearing and grubbing and they're currently installing roadside ditches and driveways. There are about seven to 10 power poles that are being relocated and Dominion is requiring the necessary easements that they need to get those moved out of the way. That completes my updates.
Any questions?
Delamar Highway, you mentioned possibly February of '26 for public and that's to continue the design of continuing the five lanes down to Clubhouse?
Yes, sir.
But it's not a priority project that's way out.
That is correct. The only one that's priority is from Ashley River High School to Clayfield Trail, which is a requirement of the developer of Homecoming, so they'll be funding that project. Our public meeting will be for the remaining portion from Clayfield Trail to Clubhouse. And yet at this point, we don't have any plans to move it further beyond preliminary design, just depending on how development progresses in that area. But we do want to hold the public meeting to get the public's feedback on the project.
Thank you. And just to follow up on that, the intersection there at Clayfield, we've already seen a couple of pretty major accidents there. Is DOT keeping up with that to look at potential mitigation for traffic circle or traffic light or something?
They do consider that when there's a number of accidents that happen there and I can go back and check too with our design plans on whether a signal is warranted yet or at what year potentially it could be warranted. If there are a number of accidents, DOT does consider that though.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So a lot of the things you spoke of are available there, but not all of them. So some of the projects that are not part of that transportation penny may not be there, but they, we have the ability to, like the Homecoming to Ashley Ridge High School, which is a developer-paid-for project, is not in that site because it is a developer-paid-for project, correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Ward, you?
I am standing in for Mr. Harper. His wife had a medical emergency, so he's unavailable this evening. So I'm going to give the updates for the Water and Sewer Capitol Projects. The first is the second phase of Stratton 2 on Burey Street. Water Rehab Contractor has completed all installation and site restoration along Burey Street and Ashley Phosphate Road. We are waiting to receive revised record drawings to submit for full permit to operate. We received the approval letter on October 27th, 2025 from the South Carolina Department of Commerce to issue the Notice to Proceed to Babcock Construction LLC for Stratton Capers Phase 1 Purchasing to execute the same. The Dorchester County Regional Water Interconnect Phase 1, the contractor has installed all open-cut pipe. Only three jack and bore sections remain to be installed. Approximately 95% of the mainline pipe has been installed. Installation activities to shift to service line installation next. Dorchester Regional Water Interconnect Phase 2, plans are 100% complete. Remaining SCDS construction permit is expected to be received within the next 30 days. Easement acquisitions are underway. Easements have been obtained for the first five tracks, which will allow us to do a change order request to extend Phase 1 under the existing budget to complete another 9,600 linear feet into Phase 2 with the approval under the SIP program, which falls under RIA. And I have under good authority that they are reviewing that and hopefully we'll hear something very soon. I ran into Bonnie Ammons last week in Lexington. DSS to Pump Station Number 4, you may have noticed the clearing along Orangeburg Road. Phase 1 Contractor has started pipe installation on November 5th with plug valves when they were finally received. Installation has started near Embassy Drive and is progressing towards Cone Lane. Phase 2 Division 2 Force Main Contractor is still working to clear those easements. Division 1 Pump Station Contractor has excavated the pump station wet well and started form and pour activities for wet well base slab and wall sections. Harleyville Pump Station and Force Main Reversal Project Design is 60% complete. Highway 15 to I-26 Interchange Project is at 60% design milestone. Permit submittals are in progress. Highway 178 Waterline Extension, the contractor has installed approximately 6,300 linear feet of 12-inch pipe. This is approximately 40% of the 15,654 linear feet, which is the total amount to be installed. Lower Dorchester Waste Water Treatment Expansion to 16 million gallons per day. That project is 56.7% complete based on the latest pay application. The contractor is currently scheduled to perform work in the interior of the maintenance building and blower building. Form and pour activities are ongoing at the VAC Truck Receiving Station, Influent Pump Station and Sludge Holding Tank. As of this time, we've expended $113,900,000 towards the completion of the project. Maple Street relocates. Another final site inspection was conducted on October 29th, 2025. A punch list was created. The contractor was asked to ensure all items have been corrected prior to rescheduling the final inspection. Pecan Tree Site Extension Triad Engineering and Contracting Company was the apparent low bidder with a total of $4,648,310. Bids are still under review. Poplar Grove to Red Top Construction, all eight-inch fusible PVC pipes have been delivered. Currently awaiting confirmation on when the HDD contractor will mobilize and begin the pipe fusion process. Two HDD rigs will be brought into the site, one larger machine for the longer bores and a smaller one for the shorter sections. Drill rig setup plan has been submitted for review. Pump Station Number 72 Upgrade near the Ashley Ridge High School, contractor has completed all the work at the pump station. Punch list items have been completed, closeout documents have been submitted and this will be the last update for that project. Pump Station Number 72 Force Main and Water Main Engineering, engineer working to submit the 60% design plans. Ongoing collaboration between Dorchester County Water and Sewer and Gurnee, the C Mar contractor. Encroachments with Dominion and Santee Cooper Power Line Easements don't seem to be feasible at this time, so we're looking at alternative routes. Pump Station Number 10 Force Main Replacement, the easement acquisition is in progress. Engineers are working to obtain the permits. Pump Station Number 20 Force Main Rediverse Woodland High School, the contractor is working on fusing 10-inch pipe. No pulls have been performed. The Reevesville Waterline Upgrades Phase 1, we're working to obtain permits. We are not going to receive a grant for that particular project and we can expect a letter on that. That is because we currently have the Rice Mill Project that we received 1.5 million and we are therefore ineligible to have two grants at the same time. We will be receiving a letter to that effect. The Shady Grove and US 178 Area Pump Station in Force Main, we're waiting on permits from agencies to move forward with that. Summer Haven Waterline Improvements, we're working to draft easement exhibits and coordinating that with Charleston Water System on the Master Meter location. The water line replacement in the Pepper Ridge area, the project design is at the 30% milestone. And then finally, the Winding Woods Reach Project, the contractor is working to complete the punch list items. Dorchester County Water and Sewer did obtain the required additional easement that was requested where the route went out of the original easements. We recorded the easement and it was sent to Santee Cooper back on November 7th. That is the complete report.
So the only thing that I think was missing there was a couple historical facts. In 1869, think about this, in 1869, the Suez Canal opened. That's a pretty big deal. And in 2003, Arnold Schwarzenegger was sworn in as the Governator of Calhoun. And in 2003, Arnold Schwarzenegger was sworn in as the Governator of California. Sorry, I just, I don't, we're thinking about you Larry, so. Next item on the agenda, county administrators' time. Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Counsel, I have several third readings for your consideration. The first is Third Reading of Ordinance Number 2519 and Ordinance to amend. Dorchester County Zoning and Land Development Standards Ordinance Number 0413 has previously amended with respect to Article 23, Section 23.2, application and Article 24, Section 24.2 dedication. This is with respect to the final lift of asphalt and I'll ask for third and final reading.
So moved. There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is the Third Reading Regarding Ordinance Number 2520 and Ordinance to amend the Dorchester County Zoning and Land Development Standards Ordinance Number 0413 is previously amended with respect to Article 5, Section 5.6, nonconformities. Again, where there is proof that there was more than one unit on a lot, we want to recognize that and that will help us to reduce requests for variance. Ask for third and final reading.
So moved. There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is the Third Reading of the Ordinance Number 25-21 and Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Dorchester County, South Carolina, with respect to Chapter Eight Businesses and Business Regulations, Article Two Business License, Division One, to delete the existing Appendix B Classes 1 through 8 Business License Class Schedule by NACs Codes, which follows Section 8-40 and substitute and lewd thereof a new Appendix B Classes 1 through 8 Business License Class Schedule by NACs Codes. As for third and final reading, which will allow us to comply with state law, specifically South Carolina's Act 176, known as the Business License Standardization Act.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and several seconds, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
The next item I have for your consideration and with counsel's concurrence, I like to take these three together. It's three third readings for rezoning requests. 936 for Michael Condon, 938 for Joanne Simmons and 939 for John Munzenmeyer. So, I will ask that you give third and final reading to the following. 936, which is a request to rezone from Single Family Residential District R2 to Single Family Attached Residential District R3. 938, which is a request to rezone from Single Family Residential District R2 to Neighborhood Commercial District CN. And 939, which is a request to rezone from Single Family Residential Manufactured Housing District R1M to Neighborhood Commercial and from Single Family Residential District R1 to Neighborhood Commercial District CN. As for third and final reading.
Is there any opposition to combining all three in a single vote?
No.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? We are unanimous. You are out of order in that case, sorry, sir.
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval to classify one Grade 311 Accounting Specialist in the Treasurer's Office to a Grade 313 Senior Accounting Specialist. That position is currently vacant and as one of our more senior employees is planning to retire, this will allow for training and overlap and also to have additional supervision in the Summer of Office. As for your approval is presented.
So moved. Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval to amend the Dorchester County Government Human Resources Policy Manual to include a supplemental holiday stipend. This will specifically help part-time employees who are covering holidays as identified in your packet. As for your approval is presented.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval to amend the Dorchester County Government Human Resources Policy Manual to include a video monitoring policy. It will outline that public areas of the county, there should be no expectation of privacy and otherwise everything else in the policy is any non-public areas, there should be an expectation of privacy. As for your approval is presented.
So moved. There is a motion-
Second.
And a second, any discussion?
Is this, um, is there a catalyst for this?
So, we have cameras, sir. That monitor parking lots and other areas.
In the park?
Yes, yes, sir. And we just want to make sure that people are aware that they are being monitored if they're in public areas. And unfortunately, we had to use those cameras, sir, sometimes to prosecute people when they've done things that they should not do.
Yes, sir.
And so that is the catalyst behind it.
All right.
And then that will make sure that anyone that has access to these cameras is only people, are only people that are authorized to have access to those cameras.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda is appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments to boards and commissions? I think we do. I'll tell you what, I'll make this one simply because I have it in front of me that I'm looking at it. So, for the Mental Health Board, I would like to appoint Ms. Joanne Monen DeBevick. I thought we did that. Oh, okay. So, that's right, that is a reappointment. A reappointment with the, her current term expires December of '25. She was elected to the board for another year as the vice chair through April 30th. So, to prevent a lapse, the consideration is reappointing Ms. Joanne Monen DeBevick. I'm saying that wrong, I know. I apologize.
Second.
Second, yeah. Sounds pretty good, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Are there any other appointments to boards and commissions? The next item on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hearn.
Sorry to interrupt, but prior to recognizing the county attorney for his items on the agenda, I'm going to excuse myself from the balance of the meeting, including the executive session, and I would ask that the clerk to counsel note in the meetings, in the minutes of this meeting, excuse me, my departure at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I recognize Mr. Frampton, prior to taking a vote to go into executive session to discuss the selection of a successor of county attorney, Councilman Hearn has delivered to me a written statement describing his recusal from voting, deliberating or taking any other action on the contractual matter to be discussed in executive session. He's explained a potential conflict of interest since the matter to be discussed would involve an economic interest for himself as he has applied for and been interviewed for the position of successor county attorney. He is therefore excused from any votes, deliberations and other actions on this matter on which this potential conflict of interest exists and shall be disqualified for the reasons that he would have an economic interest in any such votes, deliberations or other actions. The clerk to counsel is instructed to print this, his written statement in the minutes of this meeting and print these comments verbatim in the minutes of this meeting as well. So, give you those. Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd request an executive session of county council to discuss two contractual matters. The first being the purchase and sale agreement regarding 500 North Main Street and the second contractual matter being the selection of a successor county attorney. Woo-hoo!
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? I think the only discussion is I take that kind of prior comment to that selection of the successor of the county attorney is you were aware that this was, you're not surprised, Mr. Frampton, in the least bit.
Of a successor county attorney? I've been praying for one since April of 2025.
There you go.
When your last contract was signed.
So, all in favor? We are in executive session. You're welcome to stay around if you do. If you're leaving, drive safe.